I'd like to start the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for May 10th with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some new technology here, so just bear with me if I take a few minutes to kind of get used to it. So, okay, I'm going to start off with our roll call here. We have Susan Garrett, Mark Donovan, Martha Majewski, Lori Getz, Bill Brennan, and Tina Stevens.
We had to announce the two that are absent.
I'm sorry?
Announce the two board members that are absent.
Oh, okay. And Danielle Joen and Bob Cooney are not here.
I never did that before, so.
Thank you. Okay. Announcements of executive sessions. We had executive session on April 23rd and May 10th where we discussed potential litigation, property acquisition, and personnel issues.
April 27th.
Did I say 22nd?
Yes.
I meant 27th. Yes, it even says 27 on here. Woo, sorry about that. Presentation, the presentation of the 2022 audited financials. Jeff, I'm so sorry, Jeff, I'm going to butcher your last name. Actually, I'm not even going to say your last name. Barbara Kane Thornton and Company will present the township's 2022 audited financial reports. If you could just come up to the micro- microphone, microwave. Oh, I am having a...
You are out of practice.
I am out of practice, that's for sure.
I'll start talking and you're going to...
Okay.
Turn off that thing.
Bob, I need you to come back, dude.
Good evening and thank you for having me out. My name is Jeff Kowalczek. I'm a partner with Barbara Kane Thornton and Company, and I'm delighted to present the results of our audit for the year ended December 31st, 2022. We were onsite in February, performing the fieldwork for our audit, and issued our report in March in advance of the Department of Community and Economic Development's April 1st municipal filing deadline. Delighted to be here and letting you know that we issued an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion, on your financial statements, which were presented in conformity with the DCED's basis of accounting. We also did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Last year, we had had a couple recommendations about some operational matters with bank reconciliation and pension reporting. I'm pleased to let you know that those have been resolved, so we identified them as fixed, or not fixed, but resolved. And we had a couple open recommendations regarding things like updating a disaster recovery plan and password policy. So, just some sort of overarching things that are always important and just to look at and potentially refresh. 2022, to highlight some of the numbers without going into too much detail, it was a year in which you saw an increase in your overall net position as a municipality. That was because your, primarily because your open space fund, in which you collect money every year and then have large purchases every few years, was in a year that you were, did not make a big purchase. So, that was a large driver. One driver in the opposite direction, as we all know, 2022 was not a great year for investments. So, actually, the largest portion, because your municipal pension plans are included in the financials, the largest single expenditure category was actually pension losses. In 2023, so far, we are seeing some rebounding in that, and of course, those funds are held in trusts, so they're outside the direct control of the municipality, but they do get reported because they're on the DCED form. At this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions that anybody may have about the audit process, the financial statements, or anything else I can touch on.
Do you have any questions? Jeff, my usual question, did any staff, oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Ian. Did any staff give you a hard time, or try to hide anything, or try to prevent you from doing your job properly?
No.
No.
As has been the case in prior years, management and staff were fully helpful, forthcoming, and provided all requested information.
Okay.
Which included information about specific transactions, as well as controlled processes. So, we received everything we requested.
Okay. And you'd already answered this earlier about our internal controls. You're happy with our internal controls and the way everything is done in the office?
Yeah, we did not identify, under professional standards, I'm constrained in what I can say, but we did not identify any findings to report.
Okay. So, you have no suspicions of any mishandling of funds, or any potential fraud, or anything like that, from our staff or elected officials?
Correct. We did not identify any indications of either of those items.
I knew the answers to all of those, but you know...
I did, too.
Sometimes you just have, sometimes you just have to ask them so that the public can be satisfied, so.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me out, and I wish you a great rest of your meeting, and a great rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Michael, Peter Bars is also here.
Yep. I was just going to say, Peter, did you want to add anything, or ask Jeff anything?
Actually, I'm...
Can you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Sure. Peter Bars, I'm a CPA. I work with Bars, Gowie, Amon, and Faltz. We're a firm located in media. Have our main offices in media, Pennsylvania. We also have an office in Chad's Ford. I've been fortunate enough to help out here from an accounting and financial consulting perspective, and I think we were able to mitigate some of the past findings concerning, looking at the bank recs, an independent third party. What we're going to plan to do, with Ms. Getz's assistance, of course, would be to tackle those few open items. We've already, I've already sent her an accounting procedures manual that we use in another municipality. So, we'll doctor that up and get that done, and there's a, I think there's an investment policy that these, that our auditors are considering us implementing, so we'll take a look at that. So, there's, we'll work on that in addition to helping out, reviewing, continuing to review on a monthly basis, the journal entries, cash receipts, and bank recs. So, look forward to working with you guys again this year.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Jeff?
No, no. We've actually had an opportunity to review the draft. Ms. Getz and I reviewed the draft pretty much, pretty much in depth. There were, there were questions that we asked. We were very satisfied with the answers. They're a fine firm, and we're fortunate to have these guys. They do a good job.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
If you have nothing else, I'm going to leave.
Yep.
Have a good meeting.
Bye. Thank you both.
Thanks, Peter.
Enjoy your...
Moving on to the regular business meeting, our consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, April 12th, 2023, business meeting, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of April 2023. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payment of bills, approval of dispersments dated May 10th, 2023. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori, do you have any comments?
All the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor? Aye. Old business, ratify the term year of Charles Aquilina as an alternate member of the Environmental Advisory Council with the term to expire of December 31st, 2025. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor? Aye. That was just a cleanup. I think we had the wrong year...
We did.
For his term of expire. New business, a motion to appoint Michael Crati of Sienna Law to represent the planning commission and the, and the interests of the township in the conditional use hearings for ProveCo Pine Good Phoenixville LLC. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Possible motion.
Possible motion to appeal the zoning hearing board decision dated March 21st, 2023, for the application number 2022-09 of 1422 and 1442 Tullamore Lane. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? Can you come up to the microphone, please? And if you could state your name and your address?
Sir, excuse me. Not quite this... That's your question. Good evening. My name is Dennis McKnight. I live at...
Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
I live on 20 Bantry Lane in the Wayhill neighborhood, and I want to rise in opposition to this particular motion for two reasons. First being, we have a number of volunteer committees and commissions in the township, which are people by township presidents who go out and do this kind of work, that we are now, in this motion, asking to appeal. I think we have to be careful of taking work that has been done in good faith by people who have volunteered their time and effort to do this, and then having the Board of Supervisors possibly override decisions that they have made. That's the first reason. The second reason is, having done some, a little bit of research about the zoning hearing board's functions and so forth, and I apologize, but I'm going to read this, "The zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial body, and its powers are, to some extent, judicial in nature, and its decisions are not subject to the approval of the supervisors. The supervisors appoint them, but at that point, it's an independent body. And also, a second piece of that is that if someone does not like a decision made by the zoning commission, the next step is not the Board of Supervisors, the next step is Commonwealth Court. So, again, if someone feels that a decision has been made by the zoning board, and they feel agreed by it, then their choices have to come to the supervisors, but to come to the Commonwealth Court and appeal that decision." Thank you.
Bill Brennan, the solicitor. With all due respect, you're incorrect about the procedures, about who can appeal and how it can be appealed, so I...
It says right here in the calculation for the state.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you, but...
No, don't argue with the state.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Ellen Jansen, 15 Galway Lane, also Wayhill. And I'd like to know, what does this mean, possible motion to appeal the zoning board here?
It was, it was a discussion we had. We made the motion. It's not, no longer a possible motion, it's a motion that's been made.
Okay.
The motion to appeal is before the board?
The motion to appeal the zoning hearing board decision has been made by Martha, and I seconded it. So, it has, it's now on the table.
And so, okay, so given that, why is there a motion to appeal that decision?
Yeah. We don't get into the details of our legal papers. There'll be, if this motion is passed, there'll be a notice of appeal filed, which will be public, and at that time, you will see the reasons why. I'm not going to or authorized to go into the details of the procedure at this time.
So, even though there were a number of meetings and a lot of discussions, and the decision made, all that can be appealed?
Yes.
And invalidated? So, why does the zoning board even exist, number one? Number two, I know this isn't pertinent, this, but I look at Delaware Valley Paving Company, which was here a number of years ago. Oh, I'll just have a few little trucks and my whatever. And I believe it was you, Mr. Brennan, I'm not sure who said, wait, you can't approve that because you don't know what you're approving. But you were waived off, and it got approved. And now, it's this very large complex that's also been repaved, and I don't know if they got permits for elevating with all the repaving, and they got zoning approval, or not they, but allegedly, although the same guy owns it, the property on the other side of the Valley Forge Sewer Authority for a repo, truck repo place. But when I drove down there a couple of times, most recently about a month ago, it's not, doesn't look like truck repo, it looks like all Delaware Valley trucks, supplies, et cetera, Delaware Valley Paving. And there's also the rumor that they, Delaware Valley Paving wants to buy that Italianate house that's on the, right there by Paulings Road. Who knows what would happen with that? And that they want to put an asphalt plant there. So, all these things, because the zoning board passed that he could have his tarp, blacktop asphalt business in that one place, and now he's spread all over. But there haven't been any appeals for what he's done, and that's all, not only not good for the township, but it's polluting the Schuylkill River with all of the asphalt runoff, et cetera. So, here's something that seems so relatively minor, this zoning board decision dated March 21st, compared to other things that are happening. So, I know I'm not the only one who thinks that. Thank you for your time.
Yeah?
Come on up.
Come on.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Ginoni. I live at 1452 Tullamore Lane. My property, my backyard backs up to the property in question with the wall. My property has the longest section of wall adjacent to their property. And my question again is, like Ellen just said, a lot of water went over the dam to get to this point. All three of the adjacent neighbors, myself and my two adjacent neighbors to me, said to the zoning hearing board, we'd love the wall to stay because the damage is done, and we don't want any more disruption, and the wall is growing over nicely, and it's going to disappear because of the shrubbery. Is our opinion not worth consideration in this? And why do you feel the need to, like, override what our interests are, what our desires are, as the most affected neighbors? I don't understand. On top of that, my property, again, is like arguably the longest section of wall. I don't get any communication of these meetings. I don't, I've never gotten an email, nor have I gotten a letter saying, hey, there's going to be a meeting that affects your property. I don't understand the mechanics of that. And most importantly to me, selfishly, two and a half years ago, I signed an agreement with these two gentlemen to do a small land swap to enable them to build their wall where they wanted to, and help my property with the runoff. That two-and-a-half-year-old signed document that was submitted as a request to redraw the property lines to the township is still sitting somewhere, and nothing's been done. So...
I'm not going to let you go with that. The agreement, the land swap, had nothing to do with the wall.
Correct. It doesn't.
Had nothing to do with the wall, right?
Right.
So, the applicants were given a list of conditions that they had to comply with in order to get the plan signed. They never did anything. So, I'm only correcting you because, so, when I keep hearing this stuff about delays, you have no idea what you're talking about.
Thank you for the commentary. From my perspective, right, all I'm interested in is the agreement to exchange the small pieces of property. What ultimately you choose to do as the township with the landowners in question is up to you, what you choose to do with the wall. But why should my request to do the small land swap be held up by this?
Well, I've said about all that I am going to say about this, but there's 180 feet of the wall that's on your property.
Correct.
All right. So, the application for relief for a wall by the applicants is not legally made for property that they don't own. So, there are a lot of problems with this, and we'll deal with them in connection with how this goes.
Mr. Brennan, you have the ability to resolve all these problems quickly and efficiently if you choose to, and you're not choosing to as a township. Thank you.
Can you state your name and address for the record? I know we know who you are, but just for the record.
Randall Wagner, 1422 Tullamore Lane. I'm one of the applicants for the zoning variance that was granted. I'm really confused as to what the end game is here. We were told by Attorney Brennan that we needed to get a zoning variance for the wall.
We're not going to respond to you, sir. We're involved in litigation matter, and you get three minutes. You can tell us what you want, but we're not going to listen to you do your case tonight, if you wish. Not going to happen.
Then I feel we do need to comment on your remarks about we have not addressed any of the comments. We have addressed every single comment that was issued in the review letter by T and M Engineering, and that is all that we were asked to do. We have responded to every request from the township in a timely manner in order to get this resolved.
Well, I, you know, it'll be in the legal papers, but if you want a summary of what's coming, you built a 320-foot concrete wall without a building permit, so there was no opportunity for the township to inspect it before it was put in. So, it's amazing to me that that was done in the first place. We tried to work with you to try to resolve the situation, but all we heard from you were comments about township staff's bad behavior. You blamed the township staff for your wrongful behavior. You presented a certification from an engineer, James Sieri, who may not even have inspected the wall. We're not sure about that. We'll find out. There's no record of hardship to support the granting of a variance. The subdivision was never completed, and we'll demonstrate it if it's appropriate, because you never followed up with the conditions that you were obligated to comply with.
Specifically, what conditions did we not follow up with?
I don't have the papers here. You have them, and, for example, you were supposed to get approval of Chester County. Did you get it?
Yes.
We've never seen it. Now, you also gave incorrect testimony concerning who was responsible for these delays. We're going to have to get into that. There's an issue about the compression tests. Who's going to pre, who's going to do the compression test? What are they? How is this going to relate to an approval? It's a condition. What are you going to do, drop pieces of concrete here in the township? There are a lot of issues that are unresolved here, and the township feels that it's appropriate based on what they might do to have a court look at it.
We've inquired three times with the township as to exactly what the compression test is and what they require, and we have yet to receive an answer for that.
There's, there's an order from the zoning hearing board saying that there are compression tests. We don't make up what goes on from there, so...
I don't know what the compression test is. I have contacted several engineering firms. They have questions that I can't answer. I've called Kim Yocum twice to get clarification on this. She was supposed to go back to the gentleman on the zoning hearing board who requested that for clarification on that.
Okay. This is entirely inappropriate for you to argue your case here.
How is it inappropriate for me to tell you exactly what we have tried to do? We have, we have operated in good faith with the township.
No, you haven't. No, you have, you have not. This all started when you did a lot of work at your property without a building permit.
The day, the day after the township told us we needed to get a building permit, we filled the paperwork out and dropped the check off and applied for the building permit. That's almost three years ago.
Okay.
And, and you failed to give us that building permit.
Okay, well, we've acted properly, and we'll do what we have to do if the board votes to do it, and that's how it's going to go. So, we're not going to have any more discussion about who did what to whom about this. Our position will be in our legal papers, and you are entitled to respond.
I'm John Jarboe. I live at 1422 Tullamore. This motion should be addressing the zoning variance, not whether we built the wall improperly, not whether we had a permit to do so, not anything. The issue at hand is the zoning, the zoning board ruled, should this wall, can this wall be on the property line? Not, not anything else. And you keep bringing up all these topics about didn't have this, didn't do this, you are bad, everybody bad. That's not what's at issue. You need to focus in on what the motion should be about, and look at what the zoning board ruled on. The solicitor there told you. You need to focus on what the issue is, is can the wall be on that property line? The answer they said was yes. They gave you four or five reasons why that was acceptable to grant the variance. So, all this issue about what's gone before, what has to happen, what we didn't do, or what we did do, is irrelevant. You need to vote on whether or not the zoning board focused on what they should have, which is can this wall be built on the property line? Not the quality of it, not anything else. They said yes.
Thank you for telling us what we need to do. I appreciate it.
Well, good, and hopefully you do it.
Can I, come on up.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Mr. Brennan, you said that the process that I described was not the process. If that's the case, then I think the township needs to take a look at what the policy says that the process is, because the process does not say anything about the Board of Supervisors after appointing the members to the committee.
The township is a party, and any party can appeal to the Commonwealth Court, and that's what the procedure is.
Well, that's fine, but then why?
To the Superior.
It's Commonwealth.
To the Commonwealth Court.
Chester County first.
Yeah, no, we didn't say anything about, I didn't say anything about that, but the idea is...
That is what the procedure is, though. That's exactly what you read.
So, you're going to appeal, I guess, based on that, you're going to appeal to Commonwealth Court?
The township is a party, so that's where, that's where the appeal will be heard. Yes, exactly what you read.
Well, it's not very clear in the agenda. It sounds like, it sounds like, if one were to read the agenda, that the board would have the power to overturn the decision or recommendation of the...
No, the board is, the motion is to appeal the decision.
Of your own zoning board?
Of the...
Of your own zoning board?
Of the zoning hearing board, that's correct.
Okay. So, we're going to pay to go to court twice?
Well, as you pointed out, that's the procedure that exists in the state law, so that's the procedure that we have to follow.
But is that the correct answer, then? Instead of resolving, as was just stated here, that the neighbors don't care, nobody cares? It sounds like we're going back into the past about things that weren't done and trying to correct it in this action, which could be easily resolved by simply saying, all right, even if someone made a mistake right now, that wall is not hurting anybody. The neighbors who are adjoining the wall don't care, so now we're going to go back to somebody from three years ago and, I guess, punish them? Is that the goal of the board? Thank you.
Ellen Jansen, 15 Galway Lane. And to extend on Mr. McKnight's, and something I'm concerned about is, why does the zoning board exist if every decision it makes can be appealed? Why even have a zoning board? And what about zoning issues that have been passed? The Wawa got passed, no one's appealing that. The Delaware Valley Paving, no one's appealed that despite the fact there's been violations. What about additions and, and exterior outdoor structures that are put in with no permits, fences with no permits, porches, decks, basements, bathrooms, all sorts of things? No permits for that, but those people don't get reprimanded. And I don't understand what's going on, why it's going on. I think things like Mr. Polig's development of 51 houses is a... I think things like Mr. Pollock's development of 51 houses is a big deal. We're talking about a fence where all of the adjoining neighbors think it's fine. What, I don't understand what, what's going on. I really don't. And why have a zoning board if any, any decision they make can be rejected? And why waste people's money? People who work hard for their money, why waste it and they have, and bring them to court? What's the purpose?
Okay. Should we start?
Go ahead.
You can, you can see what all the neighbors feel about this. So we're asking you as the board to make a decision that is just rooted in fairness to all the parties in the room, separate and distinct from all the water that went over the dam, whether there's good blood or bad blood, not relevant to all the rest of us.
Well, just let me, let me just jump in there a little bit. One of your neighbors, I'm not so sure he's in favor of this. The stormwater was redirected by pipes being put in behind the wall. This wall was built without any plans of any kind, so the water is now redirected. It doesn't, it hasn't evaporated, it's going somewhere else. There's a stormwater management ordinance in place in the township where stormwater permits are required whenever you're going to do what, what was done here without any permit. And are you in favor, then, of any, anybody who wants to build anything in the township should go ahead and not bother getting a permit?
No.
The purpose of the getting of the permit is to make sure that it's built, it's built correctly. We got no permit from the applicant. It was done, as far as we know, you know, without application, without inspection. How do we know for purposes of public safety that the wall is safe? I asked you or somebody else at the hearing whether if this wall fell down and injured or killed somebody, would you sue the township? And it was you or somebody, one of the other neighbors said, yeah, probably. So, and, and the other thing is, you were requested to give a 15-foot easement so that if the wall collapsed in full or in part, that the owners could get in there and make a repair. You refused. So if this wall collapses on somebody or without injuring somebody, you know, they have no way to get in and fix it. Now, you know, we understand that some of the neighbors got a benefit here because their, you know, stormwater problems are resolved, but that doesn't mean they don't have to get a permit. And where are these pipes originating? So what's going on there? We don't know, because these applicants have just done things the way they want to do it, and they blame the township. So we are going to file our legal papers, and we're going to have a judge decide this. Okay? So all this business about, you know, who does what to whom, this is perfectly legal for a township to appeal a zoning hearing board decision. It happens all the time. Nothing special about this case. We are concerned because these applicants went and built a 320-foot wall without a building permit. Who does that? Nobody does that. And then it's more asking for, asking for forgiveness rather than permission.
This is what you want? For me to stand up here and get berated like this as a township resident of 40 years?
You brought it up.
The one, the, the one neighbor that expressed some concern, Mike White, I don't think he's here tonight, even he said he doesn't want the wall torn down.
Are you guys willing to waive any liability so if there's any injury to anyone, if there's any damage to any property from this wall, you're going to, you're waiving, you're going to accept, you're going to... If you guys are, let, tell me, if you guys will all get back to us and you'll waive any liability from the township, you'll complete, accept, accept complete responsibility for this wall, come back to us, and we'll consider this. But right now, you're asking us to approve a wall that was never inspected, that they didn't follow any of the procedures for.
This would have to be from every affected property owner.
From every property member. You guys are going to waive it.
The observation the zoning hearing board was, what happens if a large tree on my property falls onto my neighbors and hurts and injures someone?
That's why we have procedures.
There's a liability issue, right?
Yeah, that's why we have insurance and procedures and permitting. They didn't follow any of the required processes.
And when, when these processes aren't followed, liability can fall on the township, and in order to protect, again, there's concern, there's concern.
So if you win, would it be your intent to make them tear the wall down then and start over again?
We didn't say that. We said that we are going to follow the court procedure. That's all we're doing at this point. That's all we're doing. So you guys are not, are not listening, and you're not seeing the other side to this.
It, it does set bad precedent to allow, allow building of structures without permits and...
Mr. Brennan, does all of this have to be resolved at some point in time in the future before I can get resolution on my little lot line swap issue? Or can that be done?
I can't, I can't answer that.
We should talk about that.
Yeah, we're not here to discuss that.
We can talk about, I think we should talk about your issue with the lot line separately. That, that's not...
When can that happen?
Tied to part of this motion this evening.
That's just hanging over my head for, for two and a half years.
Contact, give us a, give us a call during business hours.
Should I call you, Lori?
You can call me, or you can call Kim, yeah, and we'll set something up.
Ellen Jansen again. As this goes on, I'm thinking if there's this much distress over this particular item, what about everything else in the township that's been done without a permit, and I don't see any repercussions? For instance, that Delaware Valley parking lot being elevated four feet. Has anybody looked into what it's doing? Is it safe? Is it going to fall apart? Is it polluting the Schuylkill? That, those are ramifications if it's polluting the water in the Schuylkill. What, there are other, other things in this township that are not...
You, you brought up, you brought up a number of issues that are unrelated to this, but, and if, if they're, if they're brought to our attention, these are things that can be dealt with if there's problems that can be appealed, or if they can be, if they're not getting building permits, that's something that we deal with. And a lot of these, a lot of these smaller projects, they get, they get dealt with by, by staff. They get, they, they reach out to property owners, they talk to them, they get a resolution without having to go through the legal processes like this. It's like you're talking like somebody puts a dormer up on their house without a permit. That's something that maybe they come back and they get a, they get a permit for it. It doesn't affect other neighbors. When it affects, when it affects liability and things like that, that's, that's when we get involved, and that's, this is a potential issue where we get involved with this specific project because there is liability hanging out there if we allow it to continue as it is. So, like I said, if you have complaints about other projects in the township, feel free to relay them to our staff, because they are not the subject of this matter, but I do understand consistency is key. And so if things like that need to be brought to our attention, please bring them to our attention. Through, and, and it's best to siphon them through, like Lori or Kim, because then they can compile the list, and we can talk about them in a larger agenda item or something during a meeting like this.
I, I brought them up because they, with all this that's gone on, none of those what seeming, seem to be permit violations have ever been addressed.
Right, and, and you can ask our staff whether they would be a violation. It could be something that maybe they did apply for a permit, and it, maybe it's not on your radar because you didn't call in and ask. And I, I'm not sure exactly with everything, but it's always best to call the staff, ask if there's been a permit issued, or ask if they applied for something, and we can, we can talk about it.
Well, I'm pretty sure about a couple, like the repo, truck repo place, which isn't a truck repo place, you know, the...
Understood.
Other places. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question. Have the applicants or the landowners applied for a permit? Have they applied for a permit? Has there been an application for a permit?
What kind of permit are you talking about?
To build the wall. Have they applied for a permit?
No, and, and the zoning hearing board doesn't have the authority to compel the township to issue that permit.
No, no, I, I just ask a real simple question. Have they applied for a building permit?
To build the wall? No.
They have never applied for a building permit?
Not to my knowledge.
You haven't applied for a building permit yet.
For this wall? I guess not. No, no, you haven't. Okay, all right. The zoning hearing...
No, I'm, I'm just curious as to whether they had, had applied for...
I think we need to move on, and I think, I think we need to, to move on with this, and I think things need to be discussed outside of our meeting. I think this has been discussed here long enough. Okay? So there has been a motion and a second?
I need to address one thing.
No, you don't take control of the meeting, sir.
I'm sorry.
You do not take control of the meeting.
I'm going to call the question, that, let's, we're going to make the, we're going to make our, our vote and move along with this. It has been, we've had extensive discussion on this, and we understand, we understand...
You have to ask about liability. We were asked to sign a, an indemnification agreement two years ago, and we immediately agreed to do that. We agreed to cover any liability for the township or the neighbors.
That was not for this wall. That was for something totally different. You're confusing it again, and, and we're not going to get into the details of this any further.
And I have called the question as per, as per our meeting order. We have to continue on moving with this, and I'm calling this vote.
So there has been a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Consideration of approval of the crime intervention alarm, the CIA. Proposal in the amount of $12,278 for equipment and installation and fire safety management program slash alarm monitoring at a monthly service cost of $939. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of approval to award bid... Oh, Lori, I need the information for this.
Yes. Let's have the, so Nick is here to chat about...
I'm here to answer any of your questions about...
Nick, I'm really sorry, but you've got to come up to the microphone.
The zoning issue, the oil and chip.
Well, we can, we can talk about it quickly if ever.
Smarty pants.
So we went out to bid for the oil and chip. We bid out three roads, Ashenfeld to Road, Clothe Your Springs Road, Diamond Rock Road. We received two bid submissions. Martin's Paving came in as the low bid. We discussed this a couple weeks ago at a meeting. Before we went out to bid, we, we kind of gave the heads up that we expected the prices to come in too high, that we weren't going to be able to do all three, and that's exactly what happened. So we are looking at doing the entirety of Clothe Your Springs Road, and we've had...
With the si, single application?
With the single application. We bid it two ways. We asked for a single application and a double application to see where the pricing came in. Double application is over budget, so we are asking to award the bid to Martin's Paving, they're the low bidder, for a single application for the entirety of Clothe Your Springs Road in the amount of $69,238.53.
Sixty-nine thousand, two hundred, thirty-eight dollars and...
Fifty-three cents.
That, Lori, that includes the Fog Seal.
That includes the Fog Seal. Yep, that's the single application.
Both companies have done work in the township, they're reputable, so our engineer reviewed them, so I, I think we're okay with the single application in Fog Seal.
Yep. Okay, um, have you reviewed everything yet with them about the work that they're going to do and...
Um, I couldn't, until you guys awarded it.
With Martin's, you mean? With the...
Should I make this contingent upon you approving the work, is what I'm asking? Should I make this motion?
Both staff and the engineer have reviewed the bid, if that's, if that's your question.
We can't review the work until it's done.
Okay, that's what I meant.
That's your question, yes.
Okay.
The bid has been fully reviewed by staff and by the engineer, yes.
Okay, all right. So consideration of approval to award bid to Martin Paving in the amount of $69,238.53 for the 2023 Bitchamas Seal Coat Project. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public?
Ellen Jansen again. I, I would like to extend a compliment to Nick, who, I know this isn't...
The look on his face.
Last year, I called because the street sign on, that's on our property was going to fall over, I saw it was all eroded at the bottom. It seemed like no sooner had I talked to the township person, Nick is there looking at it saying, yep, needs to be replaced. He had the new pole, street signs, everything, all done, and he and the guy, you and the guy who was with you, act so, you were so happy, like this was your favorite thing to do with Mike.
Well, both of them are favorite.
But I just want to say, what, what an incentive the township are.
Oh, thank you.
What a good representative for the township.
You're making him blush, Ellen, you're making him blush.
I was so impressed, not only by the work they did, and the pole is great, but by their attitudes and, and how...
Thank you.
I really appreciate it, so...
Did we vote on it?
No.
No, okay. So there's been a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so Nick, while you're here, I don't know when I should bring this up. I just wanted to ask about, so this is going to be Clothe Your Springs?
Correct.
And you talked about paving other roads this year?
We got that approved to go. We have to get our head out representative out here.
So that's not, it's not finalized?
Nothing's been scheduled yet.
Okay, okay, all right, cool. I know, I know we talked about it, and I just thought it would be nice to let the public know what roads we were considering paving this summer, but we can't do that until later.
Can we finalize it?
We will do it, yes. We will announce it when, when it's finalized.
Okay, thank you. All right, two-minute reports. Board liaison, Susan, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Actually, you do. The EAC, the trees have been planted.
Oh, they have been planted.
Oh, okay, so you didn't know that?
I haven't seen them yet.
Oh, okay, all right. So I'm going to make that announcement for Susan for the EAC. They planted, I think, what is it, nine trees along the trail at the Pickering Preserve.
Nice, I knew they were going to, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, that, it actually happened this morning. I saw the trucks on their way there. Actually, it looks really good, so. Mark, do you have anything?
Mr. Pollock was at the planning commission again. We're continuing to go on and on about that, so we'll see them again this month, I assume. Yeah, nothing else.
Okay, and the historical commission is gathering their thoughts together regarding the historic, what are they calling it? District area that they want to, to do. So they will eventually come before us and give us a presentation to see if we want them to move forward with that, so that's where they are with that. Okay, chief of police, Bill?
Good evening. I assume all of you have our monthly activity report. If there's any questions, I'll answer them about that.
Yep.
And Martha, I do have the ice cream announcement finally from Jim. The Fire Department, Police Department are going to be hosting it here on June 22nd at between six and eight, and we'll have activities for the kids while they're here. That's really all I have, unless you have something for me.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Township engineer?
No.
Oh, I forgot township manager. I'm so sorry, Lori, I skipped right over you.
That's okay. I don't have anything that was not covered on the agenda.
Wow, that's amazing. Okay. Oh, so Evan, do, would you like to say anything about the fire department? No?
That's why you don't give them the option. You, you just bring them up.
Exactly. Put me in the right direction, I'll be good to go. Thirty-four calls for the month, excuse me, fire calls, 231 EMS calls, encompassing seven municipalities. Average manpower per call, 12 people, with an average response time of 8.2 minutes. 198 man-hours in training. For your social calendars, I should mention, May 27th, Saturday, from 8:30 till 2, 8:30 AM, till 2 PM, we're having a car show at our main station. And in 2024, we're celebrating our 75th year as a fire company. So we are going through options on celebrations, and we'd like to have a couple different events throughout the course of the year, leading up to a larger event in August, and I'll be reaching out with whatever needs or resources we could potentially have in support of that, so.
Is that next year?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Ah, yeah, okay, that's great.
Anything else?
Yeah. Thank you. You don't have anything for our township engineer? Additional business, discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings. I think we pretty much have those.
Yep, so we had discussed, um, at the May, at the May workshop, talking about a vehicle purchase policy.
Mm-hmm.
That is Memorial Day week, I just wanted to point that out as I looked at the calendar today to make sure that the board doesn't have any conflicts.
For the, for the workshop?
Yeah, it's Thur, it's Thursday, May twenty.
I don't have my phone handy.
Fifth, I believe.
May twenty-fifth, yeah.
And then Monday is the holiday, so I just wanted to point that out.
I'm just gonna be at Cato in the morning.
I'll be around.
Okay, I'll be around.
So, we'll go with May workshop and we'll talk about vehicle purchasing. The EAC has some information to present, as I understand, on, um, electric vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Um. Some of the policies that, um, the auditors brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Would we need to discuss those or are these things that you're just gonna have to put together and we have to approve them?
That's right.
Okay, alright, then, never mind, 'cause I was gonna say we should put those on an agenda, but don't worry about it. Okay, announcements, I don't have any, other than the two that you guys just brought up, or three that you guys just brought up, um, this evening. Any public comment? Come on up.
Okay.
And I know, we know who you are, but if you could just state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Jeanne Sillup, eight-oh-one Spruce Grove, and this is, actually goes back, I'm not going back to the wall, but I just wanted to ask why we would appoint a separate counsel for the planning commission when we have counsel? It's just a, it's just a question.
You gotta explain.
Turn on your mic now.
Oh, okay.
This is a, a conditional use hearing, which means that the Board of Supervisors act as the judge and make the decision. Uh, my job is to represent the board in that process. The applicant will have counsel. The law permits, a series of cases permit the township to engage a lawyer, as odd as it seems, uh, because the judge is the township, but the township is permitted by law to engage a separate attorney who represents the interests of the planning commission and of the township to make sure that the, uh, ordinances of the township are followed. My job, I can't cross-examine witnesses vigorously because, uh, I can't look like I'm taking a position. I can't take a position. So, um, in the last Wawa hearing and in this one, the board felt it appropriate to hire, uh, Mr. Cruddy to represent the interests of the township. So, he'll be there, um, to, just to make sure that the ordinances are protected. It's not exactly the same as, um, as the township hiring him to oppose this. His job is not to, uh, you know, oppose it or to be in favor of it, but rather to make sure that the ordinances are followed.
Yeah, he did a great job last time. In my opinion, he did a great, he did a great job last time. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he, he's, he's always great.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Ellen Jansen, again, I'd like to give two more compliments to people whom I haven't met. Evan, who, I, I called you a few weeks ago about old fire extinguishers. Well, I didn't call him, I called the fire, literally with, I mean, I was embarrassed that I didn't get his call because he called back so quickly, left a voicemail, told me what to do, I brought him to the station. I mean, the guy was great, I, I just, I feel so lucky to live in this township with people like that. And I don't know how the fire and EMS people do their jobs and all this volunteer, I, you, you guys are great, I told you over the phone. And the same with the police, I tell everybody I've worked with for decades, we have the best police department in the entire state. And now that they've got that certification, I'm not sure if that's the correct term for it, you got last winter, but they still are. So, I, I, as a resident, appreciate so much what the police and the fire, EMS, all the first responders do for us. I know many people think so as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.